And we're live.
Five, four, three, two, one. Committee on Legislation, Tuesday, June 1st, 2021. Councilmember Farrelotto.
Here.
Councilmember Goulamback. Councilmember Nowakowski.
Present.
Councilmember Rivera.
Present.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Present.
Council President Pridgen.
Here.
Councilmember Bowman.
Present.
Councilmember Wingo.
Present.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Here.
Quorum is present.
Thank you. Before we get started with the committee meeting today, just a couple of housekeeping items. We have several public hearings. Everyone who is here to speak on an item that has a public hearing will have an opportunity to when that item is called. And we do have a three-minute limit per speaker. So that way, everyone is given an opportunity to speak on this, on the items today. Thank you all for being here, and we will start from the top.
Item number one, comptroller fund balance response.
Items open.
This item is open, and the comptroller's office was invited to speak on this item. Is anyone from the comptroller's office here? Okay, since there is not, we will table this item. Seconded by Councilmember Nowakowski.
Item number two, special use permit 391 Forest.
Motion to table items two and three.
Seconded by Councilmember Scanlon.
Item number four, ordinance amendment Article 20 budgeting.
Items open.
This item is open. Do one of the bill sponsors want to speak on this item? Councilmember Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is just our fund balance item, and it was updated to account for some changes and input from the administration, also council members. But really, this is just aging, you know, in an effort to make sure that we took the input from all parties and try to get a nice piece of policy here. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on this item?
Just.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to make sure that this item is ready to move forward from the standpoint of, is it to form or not? Is Corporation Council with us now?
I am.
Karen, is everything to form now?
Um, Corporation Council, Assistant Corporation Council, Karen Gordon. The document is to form to the extent that it is in the usual manner which people submitted, but it's not, I don't think it's a signed document, and we still have a watermark that says draft. So it's not finalized at this point for, you know, but at the same time, it would be the same document unless I'm going to have changes that it would like to be made to the document. It would be the same document that would be approved and, and, you know, by the common council. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else to speak on this item? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Councilmember Nowakowski had his hand up. Mr. Chair.
All right, Councilmember Nowakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This has been a work in progress for quite some time, and we were able to make a lot of edits to it, weighing in from the comptroller's office administration, and we had to receive and file a previous item because it was an older item, and this is actually the newest version of the document that we have submitted to the council. And from hearing none, you know, we are, this should be marked for approval to send it to full council. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Motion is to approve.
Motion is to approve, seconded by Council President Pridgen.
Item five, ordinance amendment Section 263-39.
Item is open.
This item is open. Is the sponsor, Councilmember Wingo, available?
Here, hands up.
Okay, Councilmember Wingo, you have the floor.
Thank you. We have been working with Corporation Council to drive this legislation to protect our constituents from food store operators and owners who are allegedly selling outdated items, expired foods, and are not in compliance with the ordinance, number one, and number two, with the conditions that are set forth. Right now, permits and inspections have no type of recourse other than to revoke a license, of which, of course, when that license is revoked, the store should essentially shut down and cease operation. But that is somewhat of a punishment to the community for some folks still need milk, egg, cheese, and bread, things of that nature. So what we want to do is incorporate some type of fine and/or fee to these store owners and operators who are not complying with the food store conditions. So we are still working on this legislation. We are also setting up meetings with the commissioner and deputy commissioner of permits and inspections to ensure that everything is legal that we are doing. We don't want to draft some legislation that one day might come back that we need to rewrite and resubmit because it wasn't legal. So we want to make sure that it is legal and that the Permits and Inspections Department know and are clearly aware of what we are trying to do with this ordinance amendment. So that being said, I would like for this to be tabled until our next committee meeting so that we can get the input and feedback from the appropriate department. So if we could have a motion to just table this for now, that'd be appreciated as we continue to work on this draft.
Motion to table? You're muted.
Motion is to table, seconded by Councilmember Nowakowski.
Take from the table items eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 18, 19, and 26.
Seconded by Councilmember Scanlon.
Item number eight, special use permit 244 Allen for Tavern in N2C Zone.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Seconded by Councilmember Nowakowski. This is a public hearing for 244 Allen is the applicant here.
Good afternoon. Yes, I'm Courtney Howard. I'm here for my husband and business partner, Matthew Gunther.
Thank you. If you can give us a brief summary of what you're applying, of what the application is for?
Sure, it's a special use permit for tavern use, beer and wine only. So Matthew and I are opening a restaurant at 244 Allen, the space where Allen Street Poutine used to be. So basically what it is, it's a small restaurant, kind of a supper club style. It will be open Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays, serving a tasting menu to 12 people a night. We expect our hours of operation will be from around 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and all food and beverage consumption will be indoors. We won't be using an outdoor patio or have any outdoor music or anything like that. I'm happy to answer any other questions that anyone may have.
Let's see, is anyone else here to speak on this item?
Um, yes. My name is Kristen Richardson. And I'm attending as a resident of College Street, just a half a block down from the proposed restaurant. And I must say that I applaud the owners for having the courage to open a restaurant, and I wish them all the best. Allen Street would be well-served by a creative restaurant. But I'm also attending because I think it's crucial that all special use permits for the Allentown neighborhood be considered carefully. During the past years, longtime residents like me have seen the quality of life erode dramatically as Allen Street, especially the section between Daze Park and Elmwood, became a bar strip with no productive relationship to the neighborhood that surrounds it. At night, Allentowners contend with nowhere to park, vandalism, fights, and indecent exposure. During the morning, we clean up broken glass, beer cans, and vomit. I'm sure that Courtney and Matt Gunther want to open a restaurant that offers interesting food and hospitality to the neighborhood and the rest of Buffalo. I hope they succeed. I do want to point out, however, that there's a history of granting a special use permit to a business that claimed it was going to be a fine dining restaurant that closed at a reasonable hour, but eventually devolved to essentially being a nightclub that happens to sell food, closing at 4:00 AM and advertising Labatt specials on posters in the window. In closing, I support this restaurant. I hope to eat there. But I do want to underline, because of the fragile state of Allen Street, especially the strip from Wadsworth to Elmwood, no special use permits should be granted pro forma.
Thank you for your comments. Is anyone else here to speak on this item?
Yeah, I'd like to speak as well. I am one of the property owners of the neighborhood. I'm the owner of the Daze Park Commons, the apartment complex that's right adjacent. I'm also, I agree in large part with the last speaker. I also would like to see, you know, businesses thrive and do well in the neighborhood. But I'm a little bit concerned about an additional alcohol license. Because, for example, what if it turns out that they don't make a profit, you know, you know, in early hours, and they decide that they want to open later hours? You know, also, what if down the road, the restaurant fails and they leave? So now we've got one more location on Allen Street that's now zoned to be, to serve alcohol. I mean, you know, I want to see businesses thrive, but I don't, I think we have enough locations that serve alcohol on Allen Street. And so, I mean, for that reason, I mean, I would, I would kind of be opposed, at least to that part of it. I mean, is there some way that they could open their, their restaurant and not serve alcohol?
I'm going to, I'm going to go to the council member whose district it is in. I just want to point out, this body, a few years ago, under the suggestion of Councilmember Dave Franzak, denied a special use permit to a bar on Allen because the, he believed there was too many bars there and did not want to grant any additional ones. And this council's vote was overturned in New York State Supreme Court within eight weeks because they said it was arbitrary and capricious for the council to deny a special use permit for a bar that's properly zoned for a bar and restaurant. So we have, I just wanted to let you know, we've heard, we've certainly hear those concerns. We've heard them before, and this council unanimously did vote to, to deny one, and we were quickly overturned in New York State Supreme Court. Councilmember Nowakowski?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. You bring up a really good point, and also my constituent Kristen Richardson really brings up good points, too. And for the most part, I always condition special use permits because of the problems that arise, and giving a blanket special use permit is problematic. So I always set conditions on them, and I'm pretty sure that the applicant will be willing to work with me to set those conditions, you know, especially if things don't work out, or, you know, just to make sure that it doesn't transition from what, you know, you're proposing to do. And, you know, and, and knowing and hearing some things about the applicant, they are, they are told to be very trustworthy people. So I will be working with them to set those conditions so that it doesn't turn into a certain establishment that said that they were going to be fine dining, but then it didn't, didn't turn out to be that way. So I certainly will be proactive in making sure that we come up with parameters and conditions that we can both agree upon before I, before I, you know, make any approving motion of the, of the permit. And the one thing that, you know, just if Corporation Council is on, I think that's the, also the, the part that's slightly confusing is because the council doesn't grant alcohol permits. That's the New York State Liquor Authority, but the council just grants the, the use permit. And if the Corporation Council can kind of clarify that for us, just for the record.
Yeah, I, this is Kristen Richardson again, and I had.
If you can hold off, please, there's a question for Corporation Council.
Of course.
Karen, are you here?
Yes, I'm here. I'm sorry, also on another meeting. Can you repeat that question, please?
Yeah, Karen, I just wanted you to be able to just to decipher, you know, what the council's role in, in, in special use permits is. Because oftentimes, you know, at least it's confusing for me and kind of a little bit of tough for me because the New York State Liquor Authority approves the establishment to sell liquor and, or beer and wine before we even get the special use permit. And so can you just define the roles, please?
Yeah, of course. The city of Buffalo through our UDO has the authority to grant these special use permits, which are discretionary permits in nature, which means we allow certain businesses to operate in a location that most necessarily zone for that will be considered that the operation on the, on the act, the activity is consistent with the neighborhood, right? As the whole essence of granting the special use permit, allowing it, uh, uh, activity that is not only done there to occur because we think it's still consistent with the neighborhood. So because it's a discretionary permit, which means that the common council has the authority to deny or modify based on standards that they review, we also have the authority to place conditions on those, on those permits. So through the UDO under Section 11.3, .3 dash, maybe F, I believe, it outlines six steps or six standards that the common council can use whenever it grants or denies a special use permit. So you can place conditions on it. You can deny based on the applicant error not meeting the standard set out under that section of the UDO, or you can grant it because they do need it. So I think generally, the council role is discretionary when it comes to granting that permit. And so it should not be taken that every permit that comes to the common council has to be granted. Just know that you have the authority to grant or not based on the nature of the, of the request, the nature of the community, and all those things. All those things come in together to make the final decision.
Thank you, Chris, Corporation Council, because, you know, as you know, there are sometimes when I've, you know, I've denied certain permits, and I cite those reasons, and then somebody goes to court and then finds that I didn't, I didn't, you know, that the, the standards that I set weren't fully met. So that's why I usually try to take a super cautious approach in setting these conditions that, you know, are the most appropriate so that we can achieve what the applicant wants and make it harmonious with the surrounding community, but also not giving a blanket slate special use permit that, you know, could pose problems down the road. But I do, my constituent Kristen does want to speak again, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'd just like a confusion that I have cleared up, and it's, which is, how does the New York State Liquor Authority power dovetail with this? Because it's my understanding that there's a limit on the number of liquor licenses that can be within any 500 feet foot strip. At this time, the strip between Wadsworth and Elmwood exceeds that limit by something like three times. So I don't understand, like, how the ruling about the beer pub was thrown out in court for being capricious, given the standing regulation of the New York State Liquor Authority.
It, the, you know, Councilmember, Mr. Chair, you were referring to Allicat, were you?
Yes.
Or a previous establishment, and then the Brew Pub.
Oh, that was.
Yeah, and the Brew Pub, the Brew Pub was never considered. The applicant withdrew before the council.
Okay. Yeah, I was thinking about the Brew Pub, not the Allicat. Yeah, but it, but there does seem to be, um, a kind of, some non sequiturs between the Green Code, what, you know, decisions the court may be making, and the New York State Liquor Authority's power.
I believe, and if Corporation Council's here and knows, I believe the State Liquor Authority allows, there could be multiple bars or places that serve alcohol within 500 feet. However, it falls within 500 feet, they automatically have to have what's called a 500-foot hearing. I don't, so I don't know that they're automatic, I don't think they're automatically not allowed to. I think it requires a special hearing if it's within 500 feet. I don't know if.
No, I think you're correct about that. So it goes, and of course, as you know, we don't have any say as it relates to the State Liquor Authority and how they grant or deny those liquor licenses, because the city don't do that. That's not what we do. The extent of our authorities really as it relates to granting the permit to operate and the conditions that we can place on those activities within cities.
Yeah, so I guess this is Kristen Richardson again. So I guess I, you know, I remain a bit confused on how the number of liquor licenses managed to triple the, the, the limit set by the Liquor Authority. And, um, and I would hope that that would be kept in mind as future permits are considered.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Nowakowski?
I, Mr. Chair, I do believe I have another constituent who lives pretty close to the application Jonathan White is on.
Okay, and I apologize. There's, my screen only shows up to 20 people at once. So if I move on or plan on it, you can just chime in and interrupt and say you'd like to speak.
Councilmember Farrelotto, thank you, and Councilmember Nowakowski, thank you for recognizing me. This is Jonathan White. And what, what I would note is two things regarding the 500-foot hearings. They are supposed to be automatic, but the Liquor Authority often does not hold them. And they're not publicized. People have to actually go to the Liquor Authority's website and check the calendar on a regular basis to find out if there is a hearing. And so it's been difficult often for residents to know that. The other thing I would point out is, and I believe this was retained within the Green Code, which is why Allen Street requires a special use permit in ways that, that a lot of areas don't, that the ordinance for the special use permit requires the council to consider the impact on the neighborhood and, quote, "the quality of life in the neighborhood" when considering applications for special use permits. And, and that is why the council has voted against some of these in, in the past or had these hearings. So I think in, in, in this case, the, the best course of action is what Councilmember Nowakowski has proposed. If there could be restrictions that would entail, which other bars, by the way, including Billy Club and others have agreed to, a mandatory 2:00 AM closing time, that there'd be no DJ, that there'd be no loud music. If those kind of stipulations were in place, I think it'd be wonderful if the concept succeeds. But the problem is, once a restaurant or business has a special use permit, and in particular, once they have a liquor license over which the city has no control, if the original concept fails, then they can just simply switch to being a bar. But with the restrictions of those type in place, then it's possible to allow businesses to come in, operate, and be successful, but to have restrictions that respect the quality of life of residents.
Thank you, Jonathan. Is there anyone else here to speak on this item?
Is there a point where we can address some of the items that were raised, or?
Sure, go ahead.
Well, I had one more question, though, about, about the, the permit. So I've heard that there's restrictions. Does that, does that mean if they don't comply, that the permit or the special use permit could be revoked after that? Do they have to reapply for it every year? How does that work?
So, Mr. Chair, I can answer that. So that's, that's correct.
If, before someone speaks, if you can please state your name for the record, and then, so the question is, Councilmember Nowakowski, if you wanted to answer that, there's a question about the special use permit and revoking.
Yeah, that's, that's a really good question. Yeah, so what I do is that what I put in the special use permits, what I've done for a couple more is that I put a sunset clause on it so that it's annually reviewed after a year, and that there's certain thresholds that if they are not met or there is an excess of, you know, 9/11 calls or something like that, I do put in a clause that triggers the special use permit to be, you know, brought up and considered again and/or revoked. But the, I put, I, the only reason it's in there is if, if you put it in there, and that's what I always do.
Okay, thank you. And then if the applicant, if you would like to wrap it up and just address some of the concerns that were brought up?
Sure, this is Courtney Howard again, and we appreciate the robust discussion. And we're glad that there's so many from the community who really want to make sure that we would be a good addition. I will say that we are very, very happy to talk with Councilmember Nowakowski in his office about any restrictions that they would like to place on this. I feel really confident that we would be in agreement, especially with some of the examples that Mr. White brought up. We have no interest in things like late night or DJs. We really, it really matters a lot to us to be a beneficial part of the community. As far as our, our dining experience, think a little closer to like a supper club or a dinner party at your friend's house, not, or, you know, a rave or a late night bar scene. We truly have no interest in late night, or, you know, we're not even going to be serving liquor. I believe the tenant before us was open late night in that same space and served beer and wine and possibly liquor. So we would actually be a step back. Our, our business model, we would not be using the outdoor space, and our hours would be much reduced compared to Allen Street Poutine. So hopefully it would be a change in the right direction and a positive direction for the neighborhood. And again, we're happy to discuss any potential restrictions or guardrails around the use permit.
Okay, Councilmember Nowakowski.
Thank you very much, Courtney. I will be, I have a template that I've worked so far on, what conditions to place, but I'll also be speaking to Jonathan and to Kristen, Jonathan, Kristen, and to others to come up with other additional, maybe guardrails that they have in place. I'll send them the draft, and then after I send them the draft, I will then contact you probably around Thursday this week.
That sounds great. Thank you so much.
Perfect. Mr. Chair, you can mark this without rec.
Good motion, okay. Motion is to close the public hearing, seconded by Councilmember Nowakowski.
Motion to send without recommendation.
Seconded by Councilmember Goulamback.
Item number nine, special use permit 1,000, AKA 1,002 Elmwood for Tavern and Outdoor Dining in N2C Zone.
Motion open the public hearing.
Seconded by Councilmember Scanlon. This item is open. I know there are several people here to speak on this. First, we'll start with the applicant. If you can give a brief description of your plans here, and then we'll open it up to everyone here.
Great. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Daniel Hunter. I am the president of Hunter Beers LLC. We plan to open a restaurant and high-end craft beer bar at 1,002, 1,004 Elmwood. We are seeking a tavern and outdoor dining permit. The outdoor patio area will be approximately 300 square feet, which is just a tad bit bigger than the prior tenants, who was Asher's Juice Bar. My wife and I have been owning and operating Breezy Burrito Bar next door for the last two years. So the community is well aware of our track record when it comes to operating businesses. We've turned a vacant lot across from Bidwell Park into a thriving restaurant, and we are recently named one of Buffalo's Best Patios. We plan to be open noon to midnight. We will have a small food menu that goes along with, like I said, craft beers. We will not be serving any liquor. The patio, we plan to close at 10 o'clock PM on weekdays and 11 on weekends. And I've, that's all I got right now. If anybody has any questions.
All right, we're going to open this up to the speaker or to the people that want to speak on this item. Peter?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor. Thank you, applicant. We wish you all the best. We haven't yet made it to Breezy Burrito because of COVID, but we will. The only thing I would ask, Counselor, that we shut it off at 10:00 PM every night of the week, and that's about the only thing. I just want to say Rin Tai was nearby. They asked for and were granted a 10:00 PM exemption, and they live with the community. To use a phrase that's been batted around lately, they coexisted. All we're asking is that the new venture coexists by molding in with the community. There are several buildings that back onto their area which are residential, and people like to sleep at night. And I'm not sure whether my wife wants to say anything on it. No, she says she doesn't, so I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Is there any, Julie Barrett O'Neil?
Hi, thank you. And I do go to Breezy, and the food's great. And you are the closest, you're, you're two doors away from my house. So we're happy to see. You're, you're two doors away from my house. So, um, we're happy to see the business doing well. Um, I support all of my neighbors in, in having those, um, you know, kind of pieces in terms of managing the time for closing. Um, I don't know if the condition, so I, I, I think I'm always cautious in terms of asking that whenever you approve a special use permit, you put in the conditions that we expect to see operating, not just sort of those pieces. So if there's, um, if you're not planning on having music, um, then make it explicit that there's no music, that windows will be shut, that, um, there are, um, you know, kind of other provisions and that some of the things that the councilman mentioned around, like if they're on, uh, there are a large number of complaints and other pieces, that there's a mechanism, that it's a one-year, um, you know, kind of review, that there's those kinds of mechanisms so that it's, there's a pathway forward if for some reason, you know, um, you, the, the place doesn't perform as you're promising us. And I think that that's not a reflection of anything in terms of your ownership, but I think, you know, businesses change. Something could happen to you tomorrow. You sell to somebody else and they, they just don't manage in the same way. So, um, I think those conditions really help the neighborhood to make sure that we've got a safe, uh, situation. I do also, I know that Elmwood has restrictions on trash cans. I would really ask that, um, you know, the, the trash um, matter be really carefully considered and how you're making sure that things are not flowing onto the street. Um, and how things are, are, uh, being, uh, cleaned up on a regular basis, because it can get pretty, um, pretty grimy and it's in, in, in all seasons. So those are my last questions or comments.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak on this item?
Yes. Yes, I think, uh, I think I might be the last person, Robert Meredith. Um, I also live on Bidwell Parkway. Uh, my fence actually backs up to Elmwood Avenue. And, uh, looking over my fence, uh, from all my bedrooms, I can see and hear the restaurants and bars. Um, and, but I am very supportive of the businesses on Elmwood Avenue. Uh, I'm a customer of Breezy, Breezy Burrito. I, uh, we're in there quite a, quite a bit. And we enjoy it and we want to see restaurants and other businesses succeed. But, um, I, as well as pretty much all my neighbors on the block, not just the three of us that are speaking, uh, really don't want to see Elmwood Avenue turn back into, uh, an entertainment district like Chick Waw Street. In the early nineteen nineties, when I moved on to that block, that's what we were dealing with. And it was extremely difficult to live there and, um, and it really did disintegrate the quality of, quality of life on our block. And, uh, we've changed that. Elmwood Avenue became what it is today and we want to see it, uh, see it continue in that direction and not in a, uh, bar entertainment, uh, direction. So I, I do want to see you su- succeed in your, in your venture. I just wanted to be able to, uh, to work with our neighborhood and our, our residential neighborhood. So that's really what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on this item?
Yes, this is Daniel Sack. Uh, I live nearby and I agree with the other speakers that Breezy's, uh, has wonderful burritos and they.
If everyone could, if you're not speaking, if everyone could have their computer on mute, please.
Uh, yeah, that wasn't my dog. Um, yeah, so, uh, so yes, the, uh, the food and drink there at Breezy's and the decor is, is very good. Uh, I do have a couple of concerns. The sidewalk cafe that they show there, uh, isn't up to the green code standards or the Americans with Disabilities Act standards, which require a minimum of five-foot sidewalks. And where they show the trees, that is not the sidewalk. That is a special zone in the green code called the edge and furnishing zone. So they allow four feet between the curb and the entrance to the patio and then another, and then sort of a turn around the tree zone for another four feet. That's really not very helpful for the community who likes to walk and we do have a wonderful walking community here. So they're taking over too much of the sidewalk. They should set back whatever they do there. Uh, and have, uh, at least five feet, if not six feet, which the green code suggests for that zone between the tree zone, I'll call it, and their patio. Um, unfortunately, with pandemic last year, uh, Breezy's took over far more sidewalk than they were entitled to. And it was very difficult for people to get by, whereas I'm sure the city would have allowed them to go into Potomac. They chose to take over the entire sidewalk between the curb and the building. Not really fair to pedestrians. Uh, so, uh, I'd asked the, the council to reconsider their drawing, their patio drawing that's, uh, in your packet page one thirty-six, uh, and have at least five feet between that tree zone and their patio. Thank you.
Joel, may I respond?
Yeah, hold on one moment. I want to see if there's any other people that are here to speak on this item. Julie?
Sorry about the dogs. That was, those were mine. Um, I do just want to reiterate what Bob was saying. I think that particularly post-pandemic with a lot of economic pressures, we're seeing a lot more interest in bars on Elmwood. And I want to raise this to the entire, uh, council. Elmwood has gone through a really long and arduous process to become the neighborhood that it is today, where it's, um, you know, really, um, rich and vibrant, um, and, and we've lost a lot of retail. I think in the, in the absence of retail, we may see more and more interest from these kinds of entertainment and or kind of alcohol-related venues. That's gonna have a really strong, it's, it's the special use permit and the alcohol permit are very difficult because you're not evaluating the cumulative impacts of what happens when you see bar, bar, you know, uh, tattoo parlor, bar, bar, you know, kind of lining up against the street. And I, I just, as the economy switches, I want to really push each of you to be considering how the cumulative effect of all of these facilities, um, are adding up and causing, uh, undue impacts on the neighborhood. And it's, we've seen it already in parking. We're already seeing it in trash loads all over the parkway. People are out and, and really active, um, but it's beer bottles all over the front lawn. Um, this is the non-glamorous part of living two doors down from Elmwood, is that you have a lot of, you know, late night activity. And even when you've got great bar owners, um, those patrons go someplace when they leave. So earlier closing times, um, management of kind of the cumulative impact, as you heard around Allen Street, is going to be really important. Um, and even when we have great operators, it's, it just winds up being a lot. So we're supportive of this project, but we, we're concerned about the pathway that Elmwood's going right now, as, uh, as Bob mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Dan Hunter, did you want to address some of the things that were brought up or answer some of the questions?
Please, thanks, Joel. Uh, I'm also a member of the community. My wife and I are property owners in the Elmwood Village. We can walk to, uh, our restaurant and our proposed restaurant. So I do share the concerns with, with our neighbors. We've worked with the city and with the community when there's been any issues whatsoever dealing with patio size. We've never had any noise complaints. We've never had any litter complaints. And to say otherwise at this point would be disingenuous. Uh, we don't plan to have garbage outside. We don't plan to have bussing outside. We're not going to have music outside. We don't have windows that even open. So, uh, we do not plan to have this be a Chick Waw-esque establishment by any means. Any, any issue with the size of the patio and the proper spacing of the patio, obviously, we're going to work with the city on that. Uh, we did our measurements. If, uh, Mr. Sack, uh, believes that our measurements are incorrect, we're more than happy to revisit them and make sure that our patio is up to code. Uh, but we do wish to be a member of the community, just like our other restaurant, abutting this one. Uh, just, just as we've shown through our operation over the past two years. And we're happy to, uh, to be a part of this and have any conversations with any concerned neighbors.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, so we, I'm just, we have not received, I know you were at the planning board last week and we're not able, we don't have the conditions that they suggested. Um, right now, we don't have a copy of those. We were trying to get them, but for some reason, we don't have them now. So we're gonna.
I'm sorry, Joel. We, we were given.
Item without, uh, we're gonna send it without rec, recommendation. It'll be voted on next Tuesday. And I appreciate all of the concerns. I think every, certainly all of the concerns that the neighbors brought up are very reasonable. And, um, I certainly appreciate that and we will send this item without recommendation.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Seconded by Councilmember Noakowski.
Motion to send without recommendation.
Seconded by Councilmember Golumback.
Item number ten, special use permit, eighteen ninety-three Niagara Street for tavern and outdoor dining.
Motion open the public hearing.
Seconded by Councilmember Noakowski. This item is open. Is the applicant here to speak on this?
Yes.
Oh, wait, you, if you can state your name and give a brief overview of what the project is.
Yes, uh, my name is Phil, uh, the owner, the owner of Buffalo Chuches First. Uh, I apply for a special use permit for the wine, beer and Japanese traditional wine. So, uh, uh, operation hour will be eleven thirty AM to nine thirty PM, Monday to Saturday. Uh, yes, we have some outdoor dining, uh, two table, eight people sit. We have some, uh, on the corner, we have with the road and seasonally, we can, we can keep it on the season, uh, like winter time, you know, easy to keep it up. So, yes, if there are any questions, please.
Okay, thank you. Are there any, is anyone else here to speak on this item?
Yes, I am.
Okay, you have the floor.
Okay. Uh, hello, everyone. My name is Aegon Moldenhour. Um, a resident of Black Rock. Um, just want to start off by thanking uh, our members of the council, uh, for everything you do for our city. Um, my wife and I are committed to raising our family in Black Rock. Um, and we're really excited to see what's going on with Niagara Street. Um, the reason I'm here today is with this address in, uh, question eighteen ninety-seven, uh, we have had some issues with it, uh, going back probably ten years, um, that really came to a head with Louis's Hot Dogs. So the root of the issue is the, um, range vent for this establishment is located in an alley directly next door to the adjacent property, uh, eighteen ninety-one Niagara Street. They're kind of like twin buildings. Um, there's less than three feet of clearance in between those two buildings. And with the prevailing wind coming off of, of the Niagara River, it dumps all of the smoke and vent into the neighborhood behind it, uh, which there's a backyard literally right there. With, you know, the family there has six or seven small children. Uh, when Louis was there, um, you know, they were obviously a, a wing place. Uh, the two summers they were open, our neighborhood was basically uninhabitable. It was just awful. Um, so, you know, I, hearing Phil speak makes me feel better that, you know, they're only gonna be open till nine thirty. That's great. I had had conversations in the past and I know there's three-on-one records from myself and other, uh, neighborhood members that have called over the years about this. I spoke with Jose Sanchez, a city inspector, uh, over the last couple of years. And he basically told me that his hands were tied and there was nothing he could do about it because it was an existing, uh, it was an existing location and not a new construction. But he did say that if they were to build that now, that it would not be allowed. Um, I have pictures that I can send to the council for your review, if that's something you want to see. Um, but those were, those were my concerns.
Thank you very much. And if you would like to email those to Councilmember Golumback, um, his email address is right on the city website. And, um, he can distribute those to the other members of this committee.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on this item?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Councilmember Golumback.
Thank you. Um, I apologize. I'm having, uh, laptop problems again today and I've had to go to, uh, sort of hybrid with my iPhone. Um, that's why I was late coming into the meeting. Um, in theory, I'm supportive of the restaurants, uh, going into eighteen ninety-three. But, uh, Aegon, uh, mentions the problems that we have had there, um, for quite some time. And I've been there a few times, uh, when Louis was in full operation and it is pretty bad. Um, so I do want, uh, my colleagues to know that it's not just him, it was some of the other neighbors that had, uh, called with concerns. And, uh, as you mentioned, the way the wind blows, it comes like right down towards Dearborn and East Street. Uh, roughly right into his property, uh, and a handful of other properties. So, uh, I do have a call in to the inspections department, um, to see if there is anything that can be done at this point, uh, prior to the, uh, uh, permit being granted. Um, so, uh, like I said, I'm in, I'm in favor in general, but I do believe that this is an issue that needs to be rectified, uh, before it gets completely approved.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else here to speak on this? Okay, then we will close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Seconded by Councilmember Golumback.
What would Councilmember Golum like to do with this?
Why don't we send it at this moment without recommendation, uh, pending, uh, me hearing back from the inspections department?
Motion to send without recommendation.
Seconded by Councilmember Golumback.
Item eleven, special use permit, thirty-six Laurel for non-owner occupied short-term rental and enter our zone.
Motion open a public hearing.
Seconded by Council President Pridgen. This is a public hearing for thirty-six Laurel is Carolyn Lee, the applicant here to speak on this item.
I am.
Hey, Carolyn, if you could just briefly give a, a summary.
Where's her camera? Oh, she's got it covered up.
If you're not, if you can just press, anyone who's not speaking, if you can just press mute. Um, all right, Carolyn, you have the floor.
So I have a two-family house at thirty-six Laurel that I've been operating as an Airbnb apartment. We have, uh, our maximum, um, usage is eight people. Usually I only have about six. Um, we seem to be doing fine in the neighborhood. I've spoken to neighbors and they are happy that we're there. Um, they're curious about what Airbnb is all about. Um, they've told me that they've seen people coming and going, but without any problems. So I guess, do you have questions with me?
I'm, we're gonna open it up to see if there's any other people here to speak on this item. Is there anyone?
Yes, I, yes, I have questions, if you can hear me.
Yes, we can. If you can just state your name for the record and you can state, um, the questions that you have and we will get to them.
Okay, my name is Yvonne Askew. I'm a resident of Laurel Street. I live at twenty-three. And, um, you know, I've noticed some things that have been happening with, um, thirty-six Laurel. And there's always been a parking issue on the street that there is no place to park. So when, um, residents need to park either in the front of their own house, there is no place. Um, and I'd like, you know, for the sponsor of that bill or the rezoning to, um, just have, say something about that. And, um, you know, we already have some after-hour noise on our street, um, early morning after-hours, after ten o'clock, uh, with our neighbors that are already there. And, um, you know, is there a way that, um, you know, this, um, will not, you know, uh, go to the point where, you know, we're gonna have to call the police on, on things like that? And is the place, um, up to code and inspection? I understand that there is no, um, inspection on, on two, two, uh, family dwellings. And since this is gonna be open to the public and a public space, is this house up to code that it can be opened up as a, um, money-making like a hotel? You know, I have a triple dwelling and I have to be, I'm inspected every three years for a CEO. And the, the double occupancy people around me, they get away with murder. You know, with not having things up to code. So I want to know, is this place, since it's gonna be non-owner occupied and used as a Airbnb to make money, will this be held to a different standard than a regular double, um, occupant place? And those are my questions.
All right, thank you. We're gonna open it up to all of the, anyone else who wants to speak on the item and then the council member whose district it is in and then the, back to the. and then the, back to the applicant. Is there anyone else speak on this item?
Yes, uh, my name is, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. If you can state your name for the record.
My name is Pamela Shelton. I am a resident in this block, and I'd like to know, um, uh, maybe this question has been answered before, but I'd like to know the length of time that the special permit is valid, or is it just open-ended? Um, I'd like to know what the criteria is for having a Airbnb in a residential neighborhood. Um, is there an annual review, the special clauses that need to be added? Um, I'd like to know what regulations have to be met, uh, for the duration of this permit, and who enforces these, these regulations? As a previous homeowner stated, um, there is a par serious parking issue, um, in our, in our block. Um, our, our residents do not have places to park. Um, we also do not want our neighborhood to transition from a residential to a, a, a travel industry, um, neighborhood. There are already two, uh, adult group homes, uh, in this block, and we have people that are wandering the neighborhood at, at, at all various times. Um, I don't know that there's any benefit to this neighborhood, to the quality of life of this neighborhood, or any positive impact for having a business, um, in, in the neighborhood. Um, the owner, the owner will not be on site, so who, who manages, who manages, um, the day-to-day, uh, operation of, 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 of an Airbnb in the middle of a residential neighborhood? Um, I would like these things to be considered before any, um, before any positive or before this permit gets issued.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else here to speak on this item? Okay, since I, I do not see any other speakers on this item, uh, I believe this is in the allocate district.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if the applicant, if Council President, did you want the applicant to respond, or did you have, how would you like to?
Um, I think that we, uh, there's several responses that may, uh, need to be answered by Corporation Council as far as the length of time, um, for the application, how long could it be operated without review? Um, I believe I know some of the answers, but I'd rather for our legal department, but I do want to say that Airbnbs, uh, have to be inspected. Um, I think that was one of the questions. So that was a law that one of my colleagues, uh, and so, and we voted on unanimously. So it's not, um, as if, um, you could just open an Airbnb. I know Ms. Lee says she had been operating one. I think when it came to her attention that she needed a license, uh, that's why she's in front of us now. Um, but if, if, uh, Ms. Gordon, if you're on, Attorney Gordon.
I'm here.
I, I don't know if you heard the questions.
I heard some of them. I could, I could say, um, so this is Assistant Corporation Council Karen Gordon. Um, my recollection is that there is an annual review, annual inspection of Airbnb. So I know that when we first drafted the ordinance, it was a standard fee that everyone would pay for an application. And once that was done, then there was an annual, um, relicensing fee basically that had to be done. So at some point after the first year, it's individual in order for the business to be operational, I do believe, have to go back to inspections and permits to renew the license. And at that time, I also know that in the, in the current legislation there, um, there is opportunity for individuals in the communities, uh, to, I guess, raise questions and concerns if they found that, um, the manner in which the business was operating was causing a detriment to the community, and they can make these calls, they can put in these petitions to the inspection department, and the inspection department would respond there. And I do believe, uh, there's a certain level or certain amount of, um, these calls, there are reports that has to be made first. People to inspect the department actually would have a revocation, um, hearing, but there's also an option for that if it comes to the point where the business is, is, is causing more of a harm to the community than a good. So there are other recourse, there, there are recourse, um, that an individual can take, or that a person can take if this application turns out not to be in the best interest of the community, so it's not a one-time and done. And as I said, they, the, um, the property has to be recertified or relicensed every year, so there's that part that componented as well.
So, uh, thank you, uh, um, the, so for the neighbors, um, usually what I've been seeing with Airbnb, unless the operator, um, is not a good operator, you almost end up, uh, in many times with a better situation, uh, than just with renters because the city doesn't, as, um, I believe, uh, Ms. Askew once said, um, the city doesn't come out to a double house on the, um, or, you know, on an annual basis. Um, this, um, is a permit, and because it is, it would be, uh, permitted, it could also be, um, reviewed at any time. So, uh, it was just a question, uh, Ms. Lee, you said you had been, and, and I know, uh, we've, we've talked about it. You had already had some renters there short-term?
Yes.
And, um, so this is for the neighbors. Have there been any complaints about that property? From those who are on, because I know you talked about the parking and the noise, but it doesn't seem like, I didn't hear anybody say it was from that particular property. Okay, so not, not here.
I'm sorry, I, I'm, I'm, I don't know what property this noise is coming from.
If you can just, if you can just, if you can just.
I'm sorry. Yvonne Askew.
Okay.
Um, my, Yvonne Askew, um, I had, I don't know exactly where the noise is coming from. All I know is that it's, it's going down, it's down the street from, from my house. And I know that there's been, uh, police, you know, down, and, and in that section of the, of the area. I don't know exactly where it's coming from, because I don't walk out there when things are, are, you know, uh, all I can do is be a surveyor from my property. And that's all that I can do, and then the police are there, and, you know, so I don't know if it's that particular property or not.
Okay, so what I'll do in, in this situation, and Ms. Lee, when you have guests there, I know that you can, um, make sure that they know through Airbnb of whatever the quiet hours are for the neighborhood. Um, and if you could include that in your documentation, um, and also, are you renting for less than four days at a time?
Yes.
So, I, I would, I just highly, um, suggest, uh, looking at that if you start to have problems, because we do have several properties that, um, people are renting them locally just to have a party. Um, and we are seeing a uptick in that, and many of the Airbnb hosts are now requiring three to four days. Um, that way you don't get, uh, a bunch of, uh, kids who rent it for a Friday night and then disrupt that neighborhood, uh, further. Um, so I would, I would highly suggest that, especially for the neighborhood, uh, in which it's located. Would that be okay with you?
Possibly, yes.
Okay.
Might I speak?
Sure. I'm, I'm not the chair, but go ahead.
Yes, if you can just state your name again for the record, and you can add to those, and then we'll.
Um, I'd have to say that, um, as far as I know, I have not had any police involvement. Uh, none of the people who have stayed in my place have had police involvement. Um, I specifically tell people there is no events, there's no parties at my place. I have been a property owner in the city in various locations, but Laurel, I've been there for many years. I was a traditional, my husband and I, in fact, were, um, operated that place for a couple of years, uh, traditionally with tenants. I'd have to say that that was more problematic for us. My husband is deceased now, and so I operate that place mostly by myself, but also with my son, um, Aaron Clanton, and he's on the call as well. Um, so we try very much to understand the community. Um, our house does have, um, off-street parking. Some of the houses over on Laurel do have driveways, pretty narrow, but, uh, we can fit two cars in our driveway. Um, I have not, um, uh, talked to anyone in the neighborhood who told me that they know of any problem at my property. I'm there often. I do most of the cleaning. Uh, right now, I'm in the midst of having the house painted. I want to see my grandmother's old house be in good condition. So I'm a good, um, neighbor, and indeed, if there's a problem there, I want to know about it. Um, so I'm as concerned as the neighbors are. Um, so if you see me coming and going, you can always tell me if there's a problem there, and I will address it. My son will address it. Um, we want things to go well there.
Thank you very much. Council President?
So what I would suggest, um, is instead of waiting for the neighbors to have to see you to complain, uh, that they're, they have given a way to, uh, contact you, um, your office or something, or whether it's you or Aaron, um, so that they could call when it's happening, and we can, we can get it done. If we do start to see the parties, and, and I'll put this as a condition, I'm gonna suggest in the condition, if there is a problem, and this isn't just for you, by the way, um, this is, uh, that there be a minimum of a three-day stay. Um, and, um, so that, that, that's my suggestion. We send it without wreck. Let's work those things through, um, and make sure the neighbors are taken care of, and, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Council. I appreciate it.
Public hearing.
Seconded by Council President Pridgen.
Motion to sound without recommendation.
Seconded by Council President Pridgen.
Item twelve, special use permit nineteen eleven Seneca for tobacco establishment in N three E zone.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Seconded by Councilmember Scanlon. This item is open. Is Leonard Sacamano here to speak on this item, the applicant?
Yes, I am Leonard Sacamano. These are my partners, Ivan Lee and Callan Christian. Uh, we just want to say thank you for your time. This will be our first business, uh, venture together, and we're pretty excited about coming to the neighborhood. Um, for hours of operation, we're looking to do ten A M to eight P M, um, seven days a week. And other than that, very straightforward tobacco shop. Um, any questions for us?
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak on this item? Seeing or hearing none, I will go to Councilmember Scanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you, Mr. Sacamano, for coming to the, the hearing today. I know you have a call into the office. I have to get back to you on that. Um, I will get back to you, um, today or tomorrow, if we can go a little in-depth and maybe even meet over at the address on Seneca Street, if possible, before next week. Um, so today, if we could send this without recommendation, and I will circle back with you, and we'll go from there.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Seconded by Councilmember Scanlon.
Motion to send without recommendation.
Seconded by Councilmember Scanlon.
Item thirteen, special use permit nine oh one Furman Boulevard for pedestrian bicycle path and live entertainment in N one S and C W zone.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Seconded by Councilmember Scanlon. So this item is open. Is the applicant here to speak on this item?
Uh, yes, good afternoon. It's, uh, Steve Burn Alley from the Erie Canal Harbor Development Corporation, along with Mark Wendell.
Thank you. If you can give a brief description of the proposal, please?
Sure, again, thank you, council members, for, uh, allowing us the time this afternoon. Uh, as quick background, I just want to let you know that in February of this year, the Erie Canal Harbor Development Corporation Board of Directors approved a one hundred and fifty million dollar plan for two hundred acres of outer harbor property. This plan is the culmination of five years of community-wide planning that has already resulted in a brownfield opportunity area assessment, new zoning for the area, and coordination with the local waterfront revitalization plan. We'd like to thank the city for their participation throughout the process, and specifically to Brendan Mahaffey and his staff, and the Office of Strategic Planning for their direct assistance and involvement over the last few years. The E C H C board has already allocated forty-four million dollars in state funding for phase one improvements that will be, uh, started this fall and be constructed over the next five years. When complete, another third of the outer harbor will be enhanced for public use and enjoyment. At our April board meeting, we committed the first half million dollars of this funding to design a six-acre aquatic habitat restoration in slip number three, which is adjacent to Wilkerson Point. We're continuing to work closely with the U S Army Corps to advance this project, which will benefit the overall environment, the fishing community, and the aquatic habitat in Lake Erie. But today, we're here to discuss the next phase one improvement, a ten million dollar conversion of an abandoned warehouse along the Lake Erie shoreline into a public space amenity for the city and Western New York residents. This nine-acre project site has been closed to the public for decades. The project will remediate nearly seven acres of contaminated land while removing invasive species. It will open new views of the lake while retaining enough of the structure to celebrate our industrial heritage. It will provide acres of habitat enclosures to enhance the seedbed for migrating and nesting birds, increase multi-use trail network on the outer harbor by an additional half mile, and it will allow for events, festivals, concerts, and other large-scale gatherings which have occurred for years on the outer harbor, to now occur in a water-enhanced setting that will showcase Buffalo at its best. Just gonna ask Mark Wendell, our Senior Director of Design, to provide you with a few more project details.
As Steve mentioned, this is an existing warehouse building, uh, former labeled Terminal, Terminal B, uh, that sits along the water's edge. This project will remove the building's skin and leave the, uh, structure remaining. So we'll have an open concrete slab, about a hundred thousand square feet, uh, that's, instead of, uh, being a, a block of, uh, for views to the waterfront, it'll be open and be passive. Um, pedestrians will have access onto the concrete. We will have a low guard along the water's edge, so people can walk up and get closer to the water. Uh, in front of this, as Steve said, we are gonna be doing some environmental remediation. We're, we're gonna be building up the soil, connecting to the existing, uh, trails that have, have been built upon and extended with the bike park that opened up in two thousand and nineteen. But this will be, uh, a destination for, we believe, for those that want to view the sunset uh, and improve the views to the water, and be public access to those, um, for any day of the week, and for periodic use for events.
Okay, thank you very much. I know there are several people here to speak on this item. Um, I received a few emails from individuals that want to speak, so I'm gonna start with my kindergarten classmate, Melissa, who's, uh, who's here to speak on this item. Melissa?
Thank you. This is true, Dolly. We, we were good friends in kindergarten back in the eighties, so, um, the outer harbor, um, as we're here today, um, I'm gonna read a statement that was drafted by Gladys Gifford um, on behalf of the League of Women Voters. Um, sorry, of course, I don't have it. Yeah, here we go. So it's on behalf of the League of Women Voters Buffalo Niagara. I offer the following comments to the Legislation Committee of the Buffalo Common Council concerning the special use permit requested by the Erie Canal Harbor Development Corporation pursuant to Terminal B on the outer harbor. We strongly urge the council to deny this special use permit requested by the E C H D C. The stated purpose of the E C H D C is primarily commercial and civic development, which vows to recognize the ecological function of this site. The council should insist that all of the waterfront site be protected as a passive park, since this site is subject to storms and surges from Lake Erie. The special use permit requested by the E C H D C assumes that large, outdoor public events are compatible with the overall purpose and vision of the outer harbor. Introducing large numbers of automobiles to the area for public events brings gridlock and congestion. not to mention the expense of upkeep, trash collection and policing. The notion of an amphitheater for large crowds and a stage to accommodate amped up performers is not compatible with the setting, nor is it sustainable in a location subject to Lake Erie weather events. Furthermore, since contamination persists in the whole of the Outer Harbor, constant care must be sustained to ensure that the areas of greatest contamination are not disturbed. Any such disturbed contamination threatens the water quality for all Metro Buffalo. This request for a special use permit is not in line with the League's guidelines of, quote, "appropriate use of a waterfront location," end quote, or, quote, "recreational activities within a framework that protects and enhances the natural environment at the water's edge," end quote. Rather, the building at Terminal B should be repurposed to attract groups of a manageable size whose creative activities build on the natural features of the Outer Harbor. This could be civic investment that celebrates neighborhoods and promotes cross-cultural understanding for the region. That's the end of Gladys's statement. I would just like to add it as my personal, um, statement on the Outer Harbor. Um, I'm in, I'm in my late 30s. I've been dedicated to protecting the Outer Harbor for, um, at least a decade personally, um, with several others that will speak. And I have young children and I'm really hopeful that we will do the right thing so that the next generation isn't here today trying to stop another ill-thought and ill-planned private development scheme at these important public lands. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. So everyone who is here to speak on this item will certainly have their three minutes to speak and then we will go back to ECHDC and then, uh, Councilmember Scanlon. So everyone here will get a chance. If I, if I don't see you or call on you, just please get started because I only see so many people on this. Um, Anna Shumay, you're next.
Thank you, Joel. Um, hi, I'm Anna Shumay. Um, I'm also going to read a quick statement. Uh, members of the Common Council Legislation Committee, thank you for your time and consideration. To put it quite quickly and directly, I strongly urge you to reject ECHDC's Event Venue Adaptive Reuse Permit. It is not a water-dependent use and not the best use for Terminal B. The plan for Terminal B should be integrated with planning for Terminal A. It should not include an amphitheater that accommodates 7,000 to 10,000 people and automobiles. Western New York has many sites for concerts and events already. It does not make sense to devote precious waterfront land to this non-water-based use that will only comp, that will only compete with existing venues battered by the pandemic. It is not inclusive of all publics. These will not be free concerts and the location is car-dependent. The Outer Harbor lacks the street patterns and public transit, transit options to accommodate this additional traffic and parking. It does not align with the public's consistently stated, since Olmstead's days, as many here will tell you, wish for a quieter, simpler waterfront. It is inconsistent with the Outer Harbor's existing uses, human and wild alike. Buffalo's Lake Erie coast is part of a globally important bird area, which includes Tiff Nature Preserve, Times Beach Nature Preserve and the Small Boat Harbor. And it is an internationally recognized Ramsar wetland that contains New York State and bi-nationally significant coastal fish and wildlife habitats, including those of endangered, threatened and protected species like bald eagles, snowy owls, lake sturgeon, muskie, warblers and much more. We should be enhancing these species habitats, not destroying the few that still exist. This proposal also calls for the removal of mature native cottonwood trees and rare plants crucial to pollinators, including spotted bee balm. The parts of the Outer Harbor that are publicly accessible at present see fishermen, photographers, dog walkers, hikers, bikers, wind and even ice surfers, kayakers, boaters, kite flyers, picnickers, swimmers and much more daily in summer, fall, winter and spring. The coastal assessment form is inadequate, inaccurate and incomplete, and there is no clear assessment of site-specific risk and resilience factors. It is founded in the misconception, misconception that this land is vacant, substandard and underutilized, and it ignores that our Lake Erie coast, particularly at the Outer Harbor where the Niagara Strait begins, is an ecologically critical area in the Great Lakes where all of the nutrients and wildlife collects. We are in the midst of an extinction crisis and have a duty and responsibility to, to protect and restore this area that is quite frankly, quite frankly miraculously rich in wildlife despite its industrial past. It is inconsistent with the city's green code and local waterfront revitalization plan goal of safeguarding our water supply from legacy contamination and non-point source pollution. It is inconsistent with the goal of maximizing coastal resilience in this 100-year flood plain and adaptive development to accommodate for accelerated climate change and extreme weather events. This plan will not improve public water access and does not uphold the public trust. Our Lake Erie and Niagara River coast is and always was Buffalo's greatest asset. What I want and what I truly believe most of the residents of Buffalo want is public access, park and ecosystem recovery and climate smart development, not more sprawl, vulnerability to and liability for the effects of accelerated climate change and planning that puts the profits of the few before the health and the happiness of the many. We need to use public monies and resources to create a waterfront that is truly in the interest of the public, the city of Buffalo and the ecological health of our land and water. This place is too important and these decisions will deeply affect our residents and visitors for many generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. And I just got a, I just got a message from our timekeeper who said that they, the watch was broken, but it's not working again. So unfortunately, if someone's over three minutes, I don't mean to be rude, but I'm going to have to stop your comments so we can give everyone, um, an opportunity to speak. And we also have other committee meetings after this. So, um, the next speaker, Joanne Khan. I think you're on mute, so if you'd like to.
I just, I just changed it. Um, I'm going to read my comments. These comments are being submitted um, by three of the founding, for three of the founding members, uh, board members of the 21st Century Park for our whole organization. Buffalo has never fully appreciated its gift of being located on a body of water through which 20% of the world's freshwater flows adjacent to one of the most spectacular river fronts in the world. This lakefront has served as our neglected backyard for generations. Our founding city fathers didn't appreciate it and neither have subsequent city or state leaders right up till today. However, a visionary who immediately saw the lake and waterfront's value to our city over 100 years ago was Frederick Law Olmsted. He proposed his most imaginative and innovative park on our shores, though it was never built. He wanted to tie the city to Lake Erie with a beautifully designed waterfront park, a pastoral park that would renew the physical and mental health of the hard-working residents of our city. A park that would energize the ideals of democracy by bringing all segments of society together in a beautiful setting overlooking the calming effects of a huge body of water. He saw a citywide and regional park that would enhance our downtown and increase the value of everything surrounding it. On the other hand, creating an occasionally-used amphitheater with taxpayer funds when many other venues for large concerts are available seems either redundant or a misuse of public funding. It is also a misuse of valuable waterfront public land, especially using lakefront land as a parking lot for 8,000 concert-goers and their vehicles. The following questions need to be answered to make the right decision. One, is it appropriate for a government entity, the state in this case, to be competing with private businesses in the concert business? Two, is it appropriate to use taxpayer money to build another concert venue when quite a number of other public and private venues are available? Three, the local waterfront revitalization program states that only water-dependent uses should be devoted, should be developed on waterfront land. Is a concert venue for 8,000 concert-goers and parking for their vehicles the proper use of this precious land? Four, how can a state authority avoid following the environmental law designed to protect our water supply and our waterfront? ECHDC should obey the laws designed to protect our environment and perform a full environmental impact study, an EIS. To date, they have not. Our group of advocates, 21st Century Park on the Outer Harbor, sincerely hopes this legislative body will realize the importance of our request and retain this waterfront land for the benefit of all the people of Buffalo and refuse the request to build an amphitheater and parking lot on it. Let's not make another big mistake. Our city has made too many in the past.
Thank you very much for your comments, Joanne. Margaret Booster?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, um, I'm here, um, speaking on behalf of the Our Outer Harbor Coalition. And, uh, I think you have our, our, um, the notes, the comments that we sent. I'm going to skip a couple to make it shorter. Um, the Our Outer Harbor Coalition includes environmental, social justice and wellness groups as well as hundreds of individuals who seek to protect and restore the abundant natural public assets of Buffalo's Lake Erie coast. We ask you today to recommend denial of the requested special use permit that would allow building a mega-concert amphitheater on the Outer Harbor. In January, the E C Erie Canal Harbor Development Corporation released a spreadsheet summary of the public comments they received on their final general preferred plan for the Outer Harbor. Of the 242 comments listed, only eight, 3%, approved the plan. The rest were critical, about half because the plan demonstrates little commitment to conserving the existing ecological values of our lakefront and half because the process for public input never included a public hearing on environmental impacts or a full view of development plans. One particular project received the most direct criticism, the proposed amphitheater and concert venue before you today. Nevertheless, on February 8th, 2021, the ECHDC approved the GPP with no substantive changes and made the amphitheater project a priority for this year. If council approves this, the stage is set for a series of uses that will severely reduce the potential for future regeneration of our Outer Harbor. Here's a sampling of comments indicating why our coalition and the general public are so opposed to this project. Campaign for Greater Buffalo, quote, "The lakeside complex would include a lawn and amphitheater with a capacity of 8,000 people with the notion that the canal-side live concert series could move there. There should be no amphitheater built anywhere on the Outer Harbor, nor permanent facilities to support mass events. That would negatively affect the now-traditional use of the Outer Harbor as a place of refuge and serenity given to passive enjoyment," unquote. Buffalo Niagara Waterkeeper, quote, "The GPP frequently describes the land as vacant, substandard and underutilized. Buffalo Niagara Waterkeeper and many other stakeholders in the region take issue with this phrasing and the general tone it sets. We cannot emphasize enough the importance of resiliency and the protection it affords the city's, City of Buffalo's lakefront." Just a couple more. Western New York Environmental Alliance, uh, actually John is here speaking for them. I'll skip that. Sierra Club Nature Group, quote, "To protect life, including our own species, we must conserve any functioning landscape and support and rehabilitate the fragments that still exist. One of these is the Outer Harbor, which is part of a major global flyway for migratory birds. We must ensure that human interventions do not disturb this critical habitat. We must protect nesting, feeding, dark skies areas and the diversity of habitat types along the coast for food and shelter."
Thank you very much for your comments, Margaret. Unfortunately, we're at three minutes and a half to wrap up, but we do have copies of these. And if there's anything additional you'd like to share, I will forward that to all of the other members on this committee.
Um, Joel, I do have to read for somebody else. I don't have to do it right now. But I'm designated for this, uh, Citizens for Regional Transit, whose comments you have, but they can't be here.
Okay, we can, I will make sure that those are filed and part of the record and I will make sure they are distributed to each council member, both on this committee and all of the other council members as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on this item?
Yes, this is Daniel Sack to speak about this item. Um, you know, there's lots to like about some of the ECHDC plans for the Outer Harbor, but, but not the plan for a concert venue. There's no advantage for a concert to be on a waterfront. People are there for the music. While the harbor and lake provide a wonderful setting, people go to stadiums that have no water features and aren't especially beautiful, and they pay big money to attend big concerts. On the other hand, downtown concerts are a wonderful marketing tool for Buffalo and restaurants and bars downtown. And concert-goers would not be forced to purchase overpriced food and beverages from the concert promoters. Indeed, daytime visitors to the wider waterfront area should be encouraged to visit the waterfront for positive outdoor uses, passive outdoor uses, and encouraged to visit the surrounding neighborhoods for more active and social entertainments and shopping. That would be a desirable economic development. A huge problem with this site for 10,000 attendees at a concert is the traffic demand that as far as I can tell, has not been studied sufficiently. The Outer Harbor is on the edge of the city, accessible from Tiff, Ohio and the Skyway, all converging onto just two lanes of Furman Boulevard. Anyone who has witnessed large events there in the past has witnessed hours of gridlock, a very significant impact where the submission claims there is a lack of significant impact. The environmental assessment statement asks, "Will the proposed action result in substantial increase in traffic above the present levels?" And their answer is no. That's just astonishing. As if traffic gridlock by 10,000 people going to a concert at the Outer Harbor wouldn't be bad enough. Think about the dangerous gridlock if there was an emergency and the area had to be evacuated. It is most astonishing to me that ECHDC writes that their proposed Outer Harbor civic use for large concerts would not result in substantial adverse changes in existing traffic or noise levels. The EAF says, yes, there will be increased noise, but there are no human receptors nearby. Human receptors, I'm thinking they're talking about people with ears? Or maybe microphones attached to recording devices? Well, human receptors. So our ears are used for hearing, and I think that during a concert, such human receptors wanting to enjoy Tiff Farm or any of the other nature and park areas nearby will be absolutely assaulted by this loud music. One could only think this credible if they had never attended a concert, that there'd be no substantial adverse change in the noise level. There should be no facilities for mass events. As reported in the Buffalo News, lawn and amphitheater with a cap capacity for 10,000 people. They don't even talk about the 53-foot, 71-foot tractor trailers, and it seems that their designs don't even accommodate these tractor trailers. Anybody who's been to a concert knows there'll be at least one or two or three such trailers. It's one of the reasons why they reconfigured the drives and, and amphitheater at Chautauqua Institute to accommodate such large tractor trailers. So in addition, uh, you've got a problem with, uh, procedure. I think, uh, Councilmember Farrelotto, Council Chair Farrelotto, uh, addressed that. Uh, so often has happened in the past, the planning board must issue findings. And though it may not be the letter of the law, it only makes sense that you and the public be privy to these findings before we discuss this and you vote on it. I foiled those findings two weeks ago. I have not yet received them. I expect to never receive them to be consistent with the Office of Strategic Plannings denying me documents I request. Thank you. I hope you table this and/or, well, and vote no on it. This is just no place for a concert venue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak on this item?
I was prepared to speak briefly on behalf of the Western New York Environmental Alliance. My name is John Whitney.
John, you have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, written comments were submitted earlier and I won't read them. You, um, please feel free to distribute them widely. They speak in opposition to approval and they do so, um, for some reasons that I'll quickly outline rather than reading the comments. Uh, this proposal is not water-dependent. It's not consistent with the city green code. It ignores, uh, years of consistent public voices for quieter, simpler, more natural Lake Erie waterfront. It's not truly a public, uh, benefit activity because of high interest costs, uh, the transportation challenges that have been referenced earlier. It duplicates and competes with other venues. It duplicates and competes with other venues in the city that are more important for large gatherings. And I say that as a musician and a music lover, too. I don't feel that this venue is needed in any way, shape, or form in the location that's proposed. The, the project lacks an assessment of the impact of climate change on the shoreline on the riparian area. And that is critical and required state law. Humans and wildlife have lost access to most of the Lake Erie shoreline for more than a century. And we have this window of opportunity to address that. It's time to do that, and I encourage the council to take that into full consideration, starting by denying this approval.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other comments? Seeing no other speakers, we will go back to the, let's see, Councilmember Scanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've had some conversations with some of the people who've spoken here today, and we are going to get together in the next week or so to discuss further in depth their concerns and how we can address them. So if we could go ahead and table this today, we can revisit it a later date after we have some more additional conversations.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilmember Galumbak.
Thank you. You know, I think that, you know, one of the, one of the key issues in the City of Buffalo has always been our waterfront. I remember reading the inaugural address of Mayor Conrad Deal around nineteen oh four, and he said that one of the things that he was going to do was redevelop the waterfront. Well, fast forward to the third millennia, and really, the only thing that had truly been developed was the Tifft Street Nature Preserve and a few other little places along the waterfront. I want to thank my colleagues for addressing the proposal to put green energy on Unity Island a few months back. While I think everybody on this council supported, you know, the green energy concept, what we didn't support was putting it on our waterfront, someplace that should be for access for people, you know, not just passive. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm more nuanced in my view as to how the waterfront should be used, but it should be, you know, it shouldn't be used for solar panels, in my opinion. Those could have gone somewhere else. That being said, I want to thank the people that contacted my office and sent information. You know, my gut feeling is that the amphitheater and the parking is not a good fit for the waterfront. I think that some of the speakers made some excellent points that you're going to be competing with private ventures in the City of Buffalo. I remember I voted against the casino lands years ago, and I remember being pulled aside by someone that had originally supported the casino in downtown Buffalo, and then said, you know, geez, Joey, goes, you have the right vote on that. He goes, I can't compete with the Senecas with the music venue, because they can do things that I can't do. And I told him, I said, well, that was part of the reason why I voted no, because I didn't think that it was fair for businesses. It didn't really have anything to do with gambling. I'm ambivalent about gambling. But it was that idea of competition and unfair competition. You know, so I mean, as of right now, you know, my gut feeling would be to vote no on this, unless I'm radically changed in the meantime. And I think that this is one of those issues that while it falls in, you know, a, you know, in a certain council-mantic district, it's like the Unity Island solar panels or some of the other bigger issues. It's a city issue. You know, it's not just the district issue. That being said, I know that in the past, I've always worked very closely with Councilmember Scanlon, and he's always been very, very good at putting together compromise and getting information out. So I, I do trust him, you know, and I want to thank all the people that came in here today to, you know, speak in regards to this project. And the very last thing that I wanted to say is I forget who it was, but somebody mentioned authorities. Well, I was the guy that sued the M F T A twelve, fifteen years ago. I forget exactly when, because they were given the original charge to redevelop our waterfront, and they didn't. I mean, for crying out loud, they were a bus company, you know, and they were given the opportunity, you know, to take care of our waterfront. And I remember Council, Congressmember Brian Higgins said that, you know, me being a pain in the rear end at that time sort of helped, I believe, for the E C H D C to get started and to be able to take over the role for the waterfront. And I do think that they have done a very, very good job overall. On this one, though, I disagree with them. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Council, President Priggin, then Majority Leader Rivera.
Thank you, and I agree with my colleague, Councilmember Galumbak, that this is a city issue. I know that Councilmember Scanlon has been successful in kind of getting through these issues. I don't have in front of me the drawing, but just in the form of a question, would this remove public access from the water in that area?
No, no, it would not, Councilmember. Currently, as we said before, this is Mark Wendell, Erie Canal Harbor Development Corporation. Currently, we have that area fenced off. It's not access to the public. So part of this project with the environmental remediation and opening it up, taking off the skin of the building, we, this will then open up and allow access, public access to the edge of the water where this warehouse currently, currently stands.
Thanks. And if, if Councilmember Scanlon, if you could keep us all really informed as you all are having the talk so that we don't get it at the end, I think it's very important. I'm kind of siding a little bit with Councilmember Galumbak on, on some of my concerns about water access, but I'll, I'll follow the lead of the, of Councilmember Scanlon and getting us the information so that we, as a full body, I think that this is so important, and I don't want to see Buffalo turn into a Chicago, which someone said the water is a gift, and I totally agree. And I spend a lot of time down there. And so I wouldn't, to be very honest, want to compete with concerts, because I usually go down there when I've had a rough day here. And I just want to breathe, and I, and I want it to be quiet. So I'll, I'll be very, very interested in the lead of, of the district council member for what is best for our city. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. This is a question for the authority. How many surface parking spaces are you planning to construct for this venue?
Yes, again, Steve Rinaldi with E C H D C. We will not be constructing any parking spaces. One of the advantages to reusing the Terminal B building itself and the area surrounding it is that there are over one thousand parking spaces that currently exist in the Terminal A building lot, which is just adjacent. There are also over seven hundred and fifty on-street parking spaces that were, are on Furman Boulevard, excuse me. So we believe that there is sufficient parking in the area for these concerts. And in fact, if I can just, you know, I do want to remind the, the council, as we're talking about this place in the overall map, Terminal B and Terminal A down at the southern end of the site, these were zoned by the city as part of this five-year public outreach process, but they are N one S or secondary employment. So a live entertainment use is a permitted use in this N one S area. The reason for the special use permit is in the U D O, the Unified Development Ordinance. They broke out a waterfront, sort of a special use permit area, because at the time that the code went into effect, E C H D C did not have a comprehensive plan in place, and the council wanted to retain this, this additional level of review. So, you know, we're not asking actually to do anything different within the zoning that the city has put on Terminal B or Terminal A. But we're here again because of the overall waterfront issue. So one, we've got the zoning. Two, we have the parking. Included in the local waterfront revitalization plan on page sixty-four, you know, there is talk about reactivation of the terminal complex. And the city even stated that the Buffalo Harbor Brownfield Opportunity Area identified strong community support for redevelopment of the site as an activity center for the larger Outer Harbor. The site is designated for mixed-use redevelopment under the Unified Development Ordinance. And this is actually keeping with, you know, the folks from Our Outer Harbor who joined us here today for comments. When we began these discussions back in September of twenty sixteen, they submitted a proposal to us, and I can always submit this to the council afterwards. But they had proposals for the terminal buildings, and, you know, specifically stating that reuse of the buildings, including some public functions in the building to expand their uses and times of use, use the parking area for festivals, put in an amphitheater in the adjacent property using Terminal B as the back of stage. They resubmitted a year later in July of two thousand seventeen, talking about a large event venue on the Outer Harbor and moving it away from Wilkerson Point, saying, "We urge a serious consideration of the connection to Terminal B that could be used as backspace, access, concessions, restrooms, et cetera, in one building. More important to our thinking is to move the festivals away from Wilkerson Point. This area has a huge amount of paved space that is available for parking, for carnivals, food trucks, et cetera." I just want to reiterate that we have worked closely with the public for five years. We've worked closely with the city. We really do feel we worked hard to get the right zoning in place for the overall waterfront, but at this southern end, where it is expected to have active uses and to be redeveloped, you know, this is a use that fits that area, and quite frankly, from some of the groups we're hearing opposition from today, this is in keeping with what they asked us to do three and four years ago, when we had a massive amount of outreach on what to do here. So again, I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The waterfront is probably one of the most remaining parcels of land. Even I call it a jewel that's left. And whatever we plan for its future use, I think we need to be very, very careful. I'm concerned about putting a venue out on the waterfront. There are other places perhaps that we can look at that might have an economic impact, whether it's downtown. Preferably, I would like to see events like this downtown where businesses can benefit from the revenue and the parking and everything that's, that's needed. The other thing is access. Obviously, it's a terrible place. I remember driving down there when they had some entertainment place there in the past, and people were getting confused because you had to get off the Skyway, loop around by the Coast Guard, and then drive back up. So access was a problem. As far as land use, I believe it should be green space. I think it should be for the public. It should be passive. It should be a place where people can go with their families. I'm concerned about the, the surface parking, whether it's at Terminal A or Terminal B. I don't think that, I, I don't want to see thousands of cars parked over there. I could imagine what it would do to traffic going both south and north. The Skyway is another issue. So, and this is seasonal as well. We're talking about, how many concerts are you going to have within the year? I mean, it's very seasonal. Perhaps we should do something that's, that's more than. I think that we should look at this, as I said, this is the last remaining parcel of land. I'm referring to the whole waterfront. The Furman Boulevard from Tifft all the way down to the Coast Guard. It's the last new parcels of land, and I think we need to spend more time and plan well and make sure we make the right decision. So I, my first inclination obviously is, is to vote against it. Certainly, I would listen to the meetings that the council member is going to hold with you and, and the community, and hopefully we'll make the right decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Majority Leader, Councilmember Scanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank the representatives from Erie Canal Harbor Development, as well as the, the residents who came out to speak today. As I mentioned, we are going to meet later in the week, either Thursday or Friday, to have some additional discussions. I will update everyone on the council, how those conversations progress, so that they're aware of what's taking place, and we will move forward from there. And again, have this meeting, this initial meeting later, and then we can go from there. So we could table it for today if there's no other speakers.
Motion.
Motion to close public hearing seconded by Councilmember Scanlon.
Motion to table.
The motion is to table, seconded by Councilmember Scanlon.
Item eighteen, local landmark four thirty-six, Amber Street.
Motion to open a public hearing.
Seconded by Councilmember Galumbak, who I believe tried to approve this a couple of weeks ago, but we had to schedule the public hearing for today. Is anyone here to speak on this item? Seeing none, I know Councilmember Galumbak is very eager to landmark this. So you have the floor, Councilmember. I think you're on, you're either on mute, or we're having some technical issues.
Yep, it was probably me. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, this is the property on Amber Street across from Assumption Roman Catholic Church. It was a former business that became vacant for many, many years. Mark Viniac and his sister ended up purchasing the property and renovated it, and the Black Rock Historical Museum is now located there. It's a fine adaptation for the property. I support landmarking it one hundred percent, as do the owners of the property. That's one of the easy ones. It's not like when you get, you know, half of the people want it landmarked, half of the people don't, you know, like Volkers down the street. This one, pretty much everybody is on board. As a matter of fact, I haven't heard a single person in opposition to the landmarking. And I think, yeah, we were supposed to vote on it, but there had been a mix-up with the advertisement or something, the fifteen days, as you said, Mr. Chairman. So I would recommend to this committee that we send it to the full council for approval. Thank you.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Seconded by Councilmember Galumbak.
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Councilmember Galumbak.
Item nineteen, local landmark five sixteen, Amber Street.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Seconded by Councilmember Galumbak. Councilman Galumbak, you have the floor.
Okay, everything that I said before, except the history museum is not moving there. It's the same owners, the same family, and the same support in the community. So I would recommend that we send it to full council to be approved next week. Thank you.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Seconded by Councilmember Galumbak.
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Councilmember Galumbak.
Item twenty-six, Brewster License three sixty William.
Items open.
This item is open. The address is three sixty William in the allocate district, and I believe the applicant was invited. And I do not know if the applicant is on.
I don't think so, Mr. Chair. I don't see him.
Okay, Council President, you have the floor then.
I can stay on the table.
Okay, motion is to table.
Good table.
Motion is to table, seconded by Council President Priggin.
Any other items?
We have to re, if we could revisit the item regarding the fund balance.
Motion to revisit the item, the fund balance item. That would be item number one.
Yes, seconded by Councilmember Nowakowski. So as the chair of this committee, I just want to let everyone know, I received a message during the meeting from the comptroller, Barbara Miller Williams, and she sent me a message that I said I would read. She said she's at a funeral service and wanted me to say, "As comptroller, I have serious concerns regarding the new item being recommended for approval without discussion of the new item." And she was, there was no advanced notification representation from my office to attend the legislation committee meeting this afternoon. The aforementioned item clearly outlines the need for further public deliberation prior to implementing a fiscally responsible party. Please reconsider and recommit the item to ensure further discussion by all interested parties. So I wanted to let everyone know the comptroller did send that message to me during, after the item took place. So, Councilmember Nowakowski? So, Councilmember Noakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is Corporation Counsel Karen Gordon on?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, Corporation Counsel. The, the item is filed in public and I know that we, we've read it. Can you address some of the, the points of concerns that the comptroller outlined in her item that's filed in committee today? I know we worked through some of them, but if you could give us an update on that, that'd be, that'd be great.
Um, let me see. So I did take a look at some of the concerns that were raised. I believe that some of the concerns were addressed. Some of the concerns were addressed last week, I believe, with Councilmember Bowman and Councilmember Noakowski. However, what, after reviewing what was said, what was sent to the common council, I also noted that some of the concerns she had were, I mean, could be easily corrected because I do believe the original document that was collaborated on, you know, with the common council and I believe maybe representative from the comptroller's office it has some of these information in there and through further discussion with the common council, the common council members wanted certain things removed. But some things were, you know, removed. I believe those things can easily be added back in and, and provide some sense of comfort to the office to make sure that everything is in, is in compliance with general accounting standards and governmental accounting standards across the board. Other than that, I don't see any issues with some of the, with some of the concerns they have. These are comments and concerns that could be easily rectified. Um, and, and I do believe should take note of those concerns because as, as we had discussed last week, we wanted to make sure that whatever document is filed and approved is a document that is in compliance with general accounting standards. And the comptroller office is the office that deals with these accounting standards. So if they say there's certain issues with the language in there, I think we should really take an opportunity to make sure that those concerns are addressed thoroughly. And, um, and that, you know, those issues are addressed and we don't have to worry about, you know, the common council itself passing a legislation that in turn, um, it has to be ineffective or has to be, you know, changed along the road. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Noakowski, you still have the floor.
Thank you. I'll conclude my remarks. Corporation Counsel, do you believe that some of these tweaks are so significant that we can't file a substitution or legislatively, what do you think is the best pathway forward?
No, I believe we can file a substitution. Some of it, they're not that significant. Like, for instance, I do believe the, on, one of the concern was section twenty dash seventeen point three two. Originally, I think the one that we have filed has already been changed to sixty and forty-five days. So that's no longer a concern. So that's not much of an issue. I think there's a section that they're concerned about twenty dash seventeen point three three that speaks to, uh, some suggested language that the common council, the comptroller can suggest some actions to be taken. If they don't feel comfortable suggesting those actions, because that's what they're saying that, you know, in here, they don't, they, they have serious reservations about a requirement of them having to suggest certain actions. That can be removed and I don't think it's substantial to the extent that we cannot just make a substitution. So I believe the nature of it can be such that we can substitute. We can make those corrections and do a substitution later on, you know, Thursday this week. And it would not be so much of a different document that we need to go through the process all over again.
Thank you, Corporation Counsel. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on the item? Okay. Majority Leader Rivera.
Thank you very much. Um, we have been meeting with the comptroller's office from the very beginning. And many of the subjects, the suggestions that they have made were adopted or included in today. Terms of language, if we can change the language, and they said that is minor. We would be amenable to changing the language. General accounting standards, if there are things in there that, you know, we need to change because general standing accounting standards, then we can do that as well. But we will make it available to the comptroller's office between now and Tuesday, hopefully now and Friday. Discuss and pick up any other concerns that she has when we do vote on this. It's clear because I read the correspondence that she had sent. It says she has serious concerns. So I was alarmed when I heard the word serious. And it doesn't seem to be serious. Some of it is language. Some of the things we can change and we don't have to change. Where all we can do is amend it. So I, I would offer to the comptroller's office among the members, the sponsors, including Wyatt Bowman and Mr. Noakowski, meet with them as possible on this next Tuesday.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, you know, I'm scratching my head because we've been very patient. I think we've done our due diligence. I, I believe we went above and beyond. If it was just me, this would have been done weeks ago, but we considered everyone and we wanted to make sure we had good legislation and we, and, and we took everyone's recommendations and we initially got this, a lot of this feedback from our auditors. If the auditors didn't see any, any real issues, I'm just trying to figure out where someone else sees real issues. When we went over this with them at length, forwards and backwards. So, you know, I agree with my colleague, the majority leader, when we talk about serious concerns, we're like, well, what, what is it that we didn't do? I know the mayor's concern was that we was infringing on his powers. We took those things out. You know, I know Councilmember Fairlado had some concerns, which made very good sense that we made those changes. So I believe we've been adaptive to everything to make sure we can put something that's solid. To make sure that we put something that makes sense. And it was not our own personal agenda. It was a collective effort. So I hope that we can move forward on Tuesday with this because I think we've went above and beyond. And I want to give a lot of credit to Councilmember Bowman, who has coordinated a lot of this and going back and forth. And we've been responsive to it. So I give him a lot of credit. This was not just us wanting to rush something through. We didn't rush it through because we could have passed it last week and we didn't. We said, okay, let it age. Let's go through and make sure everything is tied and everything. And we had it open to the public. The comptroller's office was supposed to speak. We, we don't make their schedule. We, we put this forward and they could have came and spoke on it. So it wasn't done as a late filing, it wasn't done in secret. So I'm hopeful that we can move on this. I think we did our, our work, our, did a yeoman's job on this. And again, Councilmember Bowman, Noakowski, thank you for your efforts on this. And we want, just want to move forward to put something in place. We just got a tranche of money that hopefully that we can look at and see our way to begin some of this savings that we're talking about to put our city back on fiscal solid ground. And hopes that we can do some other things down the road, but we got to begin this process. And it just seems to me that sometimes it's just like a paralysis, uh, analysis of paralysis and not really moving forward. Because again, I think from the beginning to the end on this, we've worked with every single entity who has anything to say on it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just say briefly that we wanted this to be a collaboration, a collaborative effort. And we did meet multiple times with the comptroller in the early phase of this of sculpting the policy. So I am, we definitely hear Madam Comptroller and we appreciate her input. And I'm glad to hear from the Law Department that it will just be a substitution and we certainly appreciate the input. And I'm looking forward to moving this forward next Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, that we just, we're going to read, we just revisited that item and the motion stands. And I believe we will adjourn now. Seconded by Council President Pridgen.